... United States of America and to the Republic of 40 states, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're down to public comments. I'd like to say here before anybody speaks tonight, I'd like them to please state their name. It is board policy and that each speaker has a two-minute time limit. And also, if any student, faculty, or staff names and their position cannot be mentioned in any public comments. These can only be mentioned in the closed session. Okay, at this time, does anybody have any comments for the board? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Everybody has had an opportunity to go over the agenda. Does anybody have any questions, additions, or corrections for Mr. Fraking tonight before he approves? If not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Cropper, seconded by Mr. Parrish. We'll start voting tonight with Mr. Henning.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Okay, committee reports. Okay, we're down to the student members tonight.
So, the 2016-2017 academic year started on August 16th. Freshman orientation took place on August 15th, which was a half-day for running through schedules from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Or 8:00 a.m., yeah, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It was a student council facilitated event, and clubs such as the Future Farmers of America, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and the Yearbook Club put out information tables during lunch for the freshmen to kind of get a taste of what the extracurriculars are like. And then, picture day will take place on Friday, August 19th, for all individual students, faculty members, and fall sports teams. Athletically, the football team's blue-and-white scrimmage will take place on Friday, August 19th, at 6:15 p.m. It's an annual practice game between members of our own squad, so it'll be like the JV versus the varsity, and the freshmen versus the sophomores. First game of the season will be away at Sparta on August 26th at 7:00 p.m., and then our first home game will not be until September 2nd at 7:00 p.m. against Karla. First volleyball game will be on Tuesday, August 23rd, at home against Waterloo. We're playing away game at Bellevue East on that Thursday, and then they're taking a team bonding trip this weekend to Trump Watch, so that'll be pretty interesting. Cross-country's first meet will be on August 22nd for their perennial home opener at the Metro East Lutheran Invitational, and we're taking a team trip to Forest Park on Saturday, August 20th, so this Saturday. Performing arts, the band will be practicing diligently to get ready for the football and competition season. They'll be marching in the homecoming parade Saturday, August 20th, and their first competition will be October 1st at McKenney University. And all of their fall sports will be marching as well. So, they'll have their own trailers and they'll go through the parade as well.
Any questions? If not, we'll move on to the principal reporter.
Okay. Before I start, we've got three teachers here tonight for the faculty. Mrs. Julie Kuzinski, who's in our math department, Mr. Patrick McGedley, who's in our resource department, and Mr. Matt LaR, who is in Jarvisette in our A.D. So, welcome tonight. Appreciate you being here. Okay, we have a few things in common here again, so registration, school registration, is quite, almost wrapped up. We still have some new students coming in, some returning students, still getting registered, and all that's moving along. Kids are in class, and it's going well. Teacher orientation was last Wednesday, so we had two new teachers that went through the orientation, Mrs. Becky Meath, Mr. Andrew Morgan. They had a chance to meet with all the administration in the various areas of things at school they needed to know. They got time with our I.T. person as well to get set up on the Chromebook, and with Mrs. Harris. So, it was a good day. The teachers came back on Friday for an institute day to get things ready for their classrooms and freshman orientation. My partner crime here, I talked about freshman orientation, and it was great. The kids were here all day. Pizza lunch was great. The kids are always so nervous, so this orientation is a great way for the students to just relax, go through the schedule, get to know things without having the whole population of the school here. And the student council was fabulous. They walked around in the red shirts, they guided the students, they were incredibly helpful with everything. Mrs. Adrian and Mr. Zurgel are sponsors of that, and they just really work well with the kids and do a really nice job with that. First day of school was Tuesday. The kids all went through a couple of presentations regarding Chromebook, the citizenship, changes to the handbook, and then sophomore juniors and seniors also went through class meetings for the stuff that they were gonna have to do. Mrs. Minor, our junior senior guidance counselor, spent a lot of time with the older kids, giving them information about recommendation letters and getting transcripts ready, transcripts in college education, so she's starting right away on that process. As mentioned, picture day is gonna be for ninth through the 11th grade will be August the 19th, but picture days for seniors is going to be on August 29th. Academics, congratulations to all of the spring sports. Every one of the spring sports was recognized by the IHSA for academic achievement. So, girls track and field, boys track and field, girls soccer, boys baseball, girls softball. It's an outstanding accomplishment for the students, the coaches, the faculty, the parents. There's a lot of time and effort put into it, and I'm really thrilled to say that about every one of our spring sports. Park sports are still coming. Mrs. Minor, Mr. Young have been working on that with me. We've just about got it ready, so you will definitely have those soon. Fall activities, everything's rolling. All fall sports are in session. Practices began last week. The band, as mentioned, is working hard. They have a whole Wizard of Oz, the Wiz wicked theme, so you hear that music all over the school, and they're very excited about it. It's gonna be great. Building, a couple just quick items about that. Total lock was here Monday to finish all of the doors, so everything should be in great working order. Everything's fixed, indoor, external, so hopefully we, you know, have good luck with that this year. Mr. Foster, I.T. person, has been super busy with between Chromebooks, updating software. Software for the camera system was changed over last week. New cameras put in, so that the software was cutting in and out as he was doing that, so he's got that under control. The main gym floor is now open, everything's been sealed and ready to go, and the teachers have been working hard just getting ready for the school year. Students in the news, I'm gonna try, over the course of this, to hit upon students in the news, not just the ones that are here, will be here in school and through, you know, what we know, but kids outside of school. I always am amazed at everything our students are doing outside of school. I know I'm not gonna get every one of them, so if anybody hears anything about students that they're doing outside of our school that are really awesome, I'd like to share that with the community. So, tonight, my first person tonight is Drew Wilkerson. Like to let you know, he won the Greater Area Youth Salute. This leadership event is put on by Cedar Leaf. Over 200 kids were nominated for this from local high schools, and Drew took the top honors. So, Drew, Craig Collier, Ashley Gilmore, Allison Burketter, Emily Eter, they all have their pictures displayed at the mall right now or in the upcoming days. They all had to give speeches at this event, and Mrs. Eter went, and she said that the kids just did an outstanding job representing FCHS. That's all I got.
Mr. Wilkerson?
Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Young? If not, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. I won't repeat a lot of things that both Drew and Mrs. Young talked about, but the start of the school did come and go. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Young on organizing that. And a couple things, our enrollment has increased. We're probably about 30 to 40 students bigger than we were last year. Had a couple numbers. Because of the enrollment going up, we haven't added teachers in the last four or five years. We're looking at about 10 to 11 percent of our classes are at or above capacity, probably 32 percent are over 90 percent capacity. So, we're trying to get everything we can and through what we have and live within our means. So, our teachers are working real hard, and I wanna thank them for their work that they've done so far. Wanted to thank Mr. Barcheck and the audience for allowing me to spend a little time with Dr. Holmes last week. I have reached out to both Dr. Holmes and Mrs. Stephen Bach and Mr. Jansen on questions that I've had to this whole transition. A couple things you may notice, the board packet, one of the things, I'm stealing ideas from different people, and I'm stealing her, how she writes her motions. I think it, I just think it makes it a little bit easier. If the board doesn't like them, then I can change. But, so we're gonna try that. She also, I sat down and talked budget with her, and a lot of other things, and everybody's been great through the whole transition so far, and thank goodness the kids are back. It feels like normal now, so. The last thing I had is, you should have attachment double A in your packet has the Alliance Legislation Report. That is the bills that were passed and then signed by the governor. The one to note is Public Act 99-604. It deals directly with regulating travel for school board and administration. There is not specific policy out yet. That will come out, and so that'll be a two-month process we'll have to go through and put the policy together and get that approved by the board. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Fraking? If not, we go to old business.
First thing is, asbestos work was completed. The nice thing, I included an attachment, it would be B, that actually came in about $3,000 under what was budgeted, so that's nice. So, that portion of the summer work was done. As Ms. Young said, the gym floor was refinished. Board members may recall that that is an annual thing that we do, and over time, that helps build up the surface, makes it more durable, and actually more playable. So, that looks real nice. Hopefully, they'll get a chance to see some games in there and appreciate the board. The last thing I had is, I wanted to update on the sidewalk project. I have not done anything with the sidewalk project yet. I have budgeted for the project. Recall that the estimates came in quite a bit higher than what was approved by the board, so I'm gonna continue looking at that. But, with the budget where it's at, you know, we may or may not get that done. It is not a requirement that it's done. It's probably more an aesthetics thing, but there is some broken concrete that probably needs to be replaced, and so we'll talk about that as we move forward. The grant money was used for other projects.
It wouldn't be enough.
There was, there was about $8,000 left, so the bids were, we're done with the grant money, so we ran out of time to use that. So, we used everything that we could, there was everything we could under the grant money, but the bid's not available anymore.
You recall what was approved by the board for that?
Two solicit bids for up to $24,000, $26,000, something like that.
Okay, and as a matter of fact, yeah, I'll turn to you, Dean, or are you, Greg? An expenditure up to $25,000 doesn't require a bid process?
Below $25,000, correct.
All right. And you have a description of the job that you put out into a bid, so if you, if you had contractors?
I have not put my hands on that yet.
Recommended contractors, that could be done without actually a bid process if they came in under that $25,000.
Well, the bids that we got were in the 40s, 42 to 48. So, I seriously doubt the scope of the project that was described could be done for under $25,000. So, I think if we do decide to do it, it's gonna have to be bid.
Any other questions? If not, new business.
Sure. Was asked to put this on the agenda for new parking lot. We had talked about this last year. I'll kind of give you a little information. The area we're talking about is what I'll call the green space next to the junior lot or between the junior and senior lot. We have approximately 338 parking spots throughout the school, and that covers students and all employees. Right now, we have about 12 left. Usually, the spring, we get a request for 30 to 50, once kids get their license and get vehicles. What was proposed last year was about 30 to 40 parking spots. I do not have the numbers of what that would be. I know it would definitely have to be bid out because it's gonna be fairly substantial. So, I know there was a big discussion on how much parking to put in, what to do with that, leave trees or don't leave trees, and so I put that on the agenda so that we can, the board can have an opportunity to talk about it, and I'd be happy to throw my two cents in if you want.
Would you have any discussion on this?
In the previous discussions that we had, there's some new regulation about, you just can't create and rock it, gotta be that's all.
There was a law passed last year that schools required to follow the governance of the municipalities they are in. And Freeburg's regulations, as any new parking lot, it has to be blacktopped. So, the cost of blacktopping, I checked the cost of blacktopping the junior lot, which is that L-shaped, and it was in the $250,000 range. Now, what we're talking about is a little smaller than that, but that was just well beyond what we could do.
Any other questions on this subject? My reason for bringing this up was, and just to, just for the benefit to go over how originally that came up, we approved this as a board, and then it was being examined up at the state level, and so instead of getting it done, we waited the two months until a decision was made, and now we still have the same grass area that we're not using. It was a relatively inexpensive project that Mr. Lehman got numbers from and had people lined up to do it. But, it goes to, you can get something done, and you can do it and move on, or you can what if and not accomplish a thing. You can table matters, and that's what we did in this case. So, they came down, and Mr. Madrell was correct, they came down and said that we must abide by the cities. And a couple months ago, I called Mr. Lehman and said, "How about we approach the city and the board that decides to grant variances and ask them for," I think they're a reasonable group. We've got, we've made an effort to improve this parking lot, the aesthetics. I think it's substantial what we've done with the rocking and chipping. I think an extension of that would only improve the aesthetics of the school and give us more parking spots. So, I think if we approached this and at least asked, the worst that they can say is no, but they could grant our variance, allow us to rock and chip this area and improve the aesthetics and have more parking spots. Now, so I asked that two months ago, and what was required was that it be put in the paper for 15 or 21 days, announce, announcement before the variance meeting, a decision was made not to do that, and so it didn't get done. And what that prevented it from happening was being proposed, getting approved or disapproved, and accomplishing the work before the school started. So, now we're in the situation where the work still can be done, and we can rock the new area with the agreement to rock and chip. We're gonna have to, in order to maintain the area that we've done, we're gonna have to rock and chip, oil and chip, excuse me, the parking lot again. And so, this next summer, we could accomplish the work in preparation for an oil and chipping this next summer, so it wouldn't be disruptive to the class and the students now. So, we missed the opportunity to do it all and have it completed, but I still think it would be a worthwhile project to ask the city for that variance to expand our parking lot area. Comments or questions, Mr. Henning?
I'm the zoning administrator, and I think I'm the one that put the stop to it. Basically, even if we'd have decided two or three months ago, we still fell under the old law that anything in Freeburg outside of home has to be their asphalt or their concrete. Good example, out here, they just did the nursing home, they built a three parking lots. Well, they gotta permit, and they have to asphalt. But, the key is, you've got one year in order to complete your project, that which you can stomp it down, put grass on, and everything, but within one year, that project must be The other question I would question is, we can't apply for a variance. I know when it comes to different things, they're getting very tough on passing certain variances right now. I would think if there was anyone in the community that was against the variance, it would be the people with fall children that says dust is gonna come up, and if you have anyone that makes any type of complaint like that, the people that are on that board are gonna take their health concerns into consideration. If no one objects, it would not be a problem, but if someone objects for a health reason or any other thing, then it's gonna be very difficult to pass, from my own judgment. And it would take like, you know, like I said, 21 days. It has to be published in newspaper. It usually takes anywhere from a month to five weeks to get it through to the board, to the board with the last Thursday in the month. And to get that through, I'm sure the city would weigh the cost of the variance here, you know, being the school, but we wanna try, you can try. But, if there's any negativity from anyone, neighbors or the people involved in stuff, then I believe the chance of it actually passing would be very small. And if we wanted to pass something and say, "Hey, we'll finish it in a year," then we got a year to asphalt something. And we wanna put it down and then say, "We're gonna asphalt next summer, we're gonna let it sit, rock, whatever, do." You've got one year to finish whatever you're going to do on that parking lot. And that's the way the zoning in Freeburg reads.
Even the rock and chip, you still have the one year?
You have to say, what they put it down, they're doing three stages, rock, chip, roll it, rock, chip, roll it, and then they got three stages, and then they're asphalt it all three whenever they're done. And it has to be.
That's what they're saying.
That's exactly right. And you're allowed one year on any type of, yeah, any type of building construction or anything like that, you got a year to complete it. But, it has to be completed as written. And you have to write it as being asphalted. So, I don't know if that helps?
It does. It does. And my point was, we have an existing rock and chip or oil and chip. All the roads in town are oil and chip, so the argument that it's a health concern, I think, is kind of a slim argument, not a strong argument. I think the zoning commission is probably a reasonable group of people, and the worst that they can come out and say is no. And I think a good argument can be made to allow us to do. There are differences between a public entity and certainly the people in the community know the budget restraints that we're under, and a business such as a nursing home wanting to do it. So, I'm not saying it's any easier for the nursing home, but there is a difference between the public entities and the nursing home. So, my thoughts were that an argument could be made to the zoning commission and receive a variance. And in fact, they are following the ruling at the state level, but again, I'm not a person that likes to wait to see, and I'd much rather accomplish something than wait to see what the state decides further down. They're reasonable, we can make a reasonable argument. I think we could work it out locally rather than depending on Springfield to tell us which way it has to be.
I agree with you, your point. But, if you can recall why we oil and chip the whole lot, it's because the neighbors on the north road across the street complained because of all the dust that was coming across, and that's why we oil and chip it. Just saying.
No, I agree with you. And in fact, no, little work was done to the rock gravel parking lot prior to one neighbor writing a letter stating that there was dust, and then it was rock and oil and chip the following summer. I think it's a, it was a good addition and improvement. I'm only looking to expand upon that. So, if that was acceptable for that neighbor and they complained any sense it was done, I don't know what fault they would find with the expansion and the oil chipping of an extra 800 or 1,000 square feet. I don't know what, I'd have to measure it. Yes, asphalting is out of the question. I checked on it, it's $350,000 to asphalt that hole, and that obviously isn't in our budget.
How much is it to oil and chip? Do we have a ballpark?
It would probably be close to $40,000 to re-oil, chip that whole thing next year. I don't know, you'd have to go back and find out what the last one was. Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick clarification, we're talking about doing this little area at the end of new.
I just, yes.
And then, once that's done, then the whole thing?
Well, the suggestion, since the timing of the school year has already started, the suggestion that I would make is to go ahead and complete the preliminary work with the subbase and the rock, let it settle all winter long, and we can utilize that area still, and then when school's out of session and we have to oil and chip, if we're going to properly take care of the existing area, we should oil and chip that again, then do the new area when we do that.
And to do that, we need the variance.
Yes, because it's new. It's new. We got by with it on the existing, only because it was existing parking lot. So, it was grandfathered in, it wasn't new construction, but this would be an expansion, so the argument is being made that we have to comply and asphalt it, but I don't know. I think an argument could be made to the variance, at least to ask, you know.
If we were to make that argument and try to get the variance changed, one-time step from one street to the other would probably be a better call, rather than just that small piece. Just saying, just do the whole lot, cut the trees down and do the whole thing, do it all at once. Ten years in, just saying.
That is not an area that we use. It's an area that we mow, and I don't see issues, and it's just for security reasons, having kids go out there. We do go out on this side a little bit, but I don't know of anybody that goes out there and uses the area. So, we do have different functions throughout that additional parking of that, and I came up with about 91 spots. It would be new, that, you know, graduation, big games, things like that. It would absolutely be used, would not necessarily be used right away for students, because we don't have that big a need, but, and I did. What I recall is, we also talked about what we call the Pizza Hut lot, possibly if we took over there, not needing the Pizza Hut lot, which in the long run could help with security a little bit, because then we could funnel kids in one direction and not have to necessarily funnel kids in, and we could lock doors. So, those doors would be locked, and would not have to be open in the morning, which they are now. And I know that was one of the other arguments for doing the entire, put in all the marketing and eliminate the Pizza Hut lot. I don't know what the numbers are over there off the top of my head.
That was an option. I mean, my point is that it is an unutilized area right now. We're continuing to have to mow it, fight the weeds. It's an eyesore to the. Uh, we're continually, we have to mow it, fight the weeds, it's an eyesore to the, uh, to the front of the school, because it just sits there like a Band-Aid, uh, in the middle of a parking lot, that it should be a parking lot, uh, or it should be utilized or something. So I thought a parking lot expansion was the most obvious.
We're talking about budgets, so I would think that would the first, that would be one of the first things we need to check into, is what kind of costs are we talking about? We need to know what the scope's gonna be. Are we talking about the entire thing, or we talking about just part of it? And then, we can then figure out what it's gonna cost us.
Well, I guess, first off, what Tim says, we need to, uh, find out if the board wants to pursue a variance, so I guess at this time, that'd be the first step. And I guess if anybody wants to make a motion to do that, head there. Yes, go ahead.
So if you, if you, if you file for a variance, you have to have the scope of what you're doing correct?
You have to have a, you have to have the diagram. Uh, they will, uh, they will ask every question there is, how many cars are gonna be parked there, what's the distance from the street, what's this, has it been, uh, looked at, uh, engineer looked at it, has it been approved, agreed, you know, they'll ask everything, because it does have to be, you just can't come in on a piece of paper and lay it down. It has to be professionally, professionally done.
Okay. And I guess we need a motion to decide whether we wanna pursue with engineering.
How much does that cost?
We need to table this the next month, I think, for a motion through next calls, see what kind of cost is gonna occur, before we spend a bunch of money, and then find out we aren't putting a variance.
But we're looking at the whole.
I'm looking at the whole thing.
I don't know if anybody else is.
I were not proposing that, I was proposing, uh, north and south of the existing trees, maybe take out one, two, uh, leave the, the four middle.
Don't, don't, consensus here on what we're gonna do.
But I, I would agree with Mr., Mr. Crawford, more information is, uh, is needed before we can, we can move on.
I guess as far as information goes, we can probably just give the information, do the, the whole thing, if we can pick and choose from there. Any other questions or comments?
So that's your motions?
Uh, it's, do you have any questions for that, or do that, do it?
I'm just gonna get the information, I'll bring it back to you guys.
Okay, propose a positive budget.
Um, so this is an interesting little, uh, process. Uh, basically what we do is we, uh, break down, uh, you should have that, that was shared with you guys, and we put it online as well for any of the residents that wanted to take a look at it. Uh, and we sit down, we look at what our beginning balances are, we look at, uh, what we think we're going to get from the state and taxes, and then we estimate what we're gonna spend. And so we look at, uh, you know, past, what we've done in the past, and kind of go through it, and, uh, kind of talk about what we think we can reduce. Um, and then with the auditor today, one of the points he made is eighty-five percent of our budget is already fixed. We're in a second year with three-year contract, eighty-five percent of our budget is probably, uh, already set aside for, uh, salaries and benefits for all of our employees, uh, so we've, we've got about fifteen percent to work with. So, you know, we looked at it, uh, and, and tried to, uh, tried to make a realistic guesstimate, uh, guesstimation on what the budget would be. So, uh, one of the things, and, uh, people in the public, if you didn't get this, there's on the back table, uh, that's in your packets, it kind of gives you a rundown of all of that information that I talked about in the beginning, about what our, um, beginning balance would be, what the revenue was, what are expenses, and then, um, eventually what we estimated the balance would be at the end of the year. Uh, we did have a error in the, um, Fund Ninety in a cell on the spreadsheet, and so that's corrected on that sheet, it will also be corrected on the budget that is posted. Uh, but as you can see, uh, we are, uh, we're over, quite a bit over on some, uh, there are some reasons for that. Uh, the education fund, we have struggled for years, again, that is where most of our salaries come out. Uh, in order to make the education fund balanced, we are predicting that we will have to, uh, take some money from several different funds, uh, almost five hundred thousand dollars for those two different funds. Uh, last year, uh, we were estimating we would have to, uh, transfer seven hundred thousand, and I think, uh, I know we did, uh, two hundred thousand in June alone to transfer, to keep those funds balanced, I'm sorry, and a positive at the end of the fiscal year, which is required. Uh, a couple of those transfers are from the building, the maintenance, transportation funds, um, and then also, uh, the working cash. And so, uh, as you can see, we're, we're looking at doing the same type of transfers. Last year was all working cash, uh, this year we're looking at the three different funds. Uh, a couple of things that are not in the budget, I did not budget for a boiler, uh, I talked to Bob, he thinks that we can get through the year, uh, with the boiler that we have, give a little bit of time to take a look at alternatives, uh, for what we can do with the boiler. Uh, our health, life, safety, uh, fund is fairly strong, with an estimated balance of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand at the end of the year, so if we would have to replace the entire, uh, boiler, I think that was five to six hundred thousand, it would, it would cover it, it would, it'd put us in a really bad spot. Uh, I also buzzed it for that concrete work, uh, I did not budget for a parking lot, uh, but we could use health, life, safety money for a parking lot. And so, um, you know, it's just, you have, you kind of have to keep some things in the bank in case something happens, uh, but, um, that's, that's a one-month education on the budget, so if anybody has any tough questions. Uh, one of the things, and again, I stole this from Dr. Holmes from Smithon, and, uh, I should quit saying I'm stealing things from people, because it would make me look smarter if I just said I came up with the idea, but I'm gonna steal all the good ideas I can get. Uh, Dr. Holmes holds a finance committee meeting before the initial budget is put together. She holds another one before the tax levy is put together in the fall, and then another one, um, in the spring when they do an amended budget. Um, we did not have time for us to do that before the, this, uh, board meeting, so one of the things, and I, I talked to, uh, Mr. Gough about it, was to possibly have a finance committee meet before the September meeting, a week before, and I would sit down with Diane, we would, uh, put together a report that we could present to you to look at, uh, past, um, history of, of how those funds, uh, operated, and then a projection of what, kind of what we think is gonna happen. Um, and that way you, I think the board then has a lot more information, uh, to make a decision, uh, when they do the final approval in September. So that, that's one thing that I'm hoping can happen, and then also those other, uh, finance committee meetings, uh, to try to get the, the board a little more, uh, ownership probably in the, in the budget and in these things that we're doing, and, um, take pressure off me, basically. Uh, no, I just think it would be a, a good practice, and, uh, again, Dr. Holmes told me to steal all the ideas that she had, so we're gonna be Smithin West. Uh, so I don't know if anybody had any questions, I can try to answer the best I can.
Greg, I would just add one thing to that. A long time ago, somebody made this expression, and I think that rings true right now. It's not necessary to know everything, but it's really nice when you know where to find it, people help you, and you've done that, and I think that's just fellowship behavior.
Do you have any dates that you would like to have a committee meeting?
I, I think it would be good to have at least, at least a week before, the board meeting's on a Thursday, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday the week before. I honestly have not looked at the schedule, I can pull it up fairly quickly. Uh, it would be twelve, thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen, something like that.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, those are those, that week. So, I don't know if anybody, I put that in my little memo to you guys, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at schedules, or was adamantly, adamantly opposed to having a finance committee meeting?
I'm not opposed to it, I don't know if anybody else is, but, uh, I'd just say, this is me, you can contact us with some dates, and we'll get back with you.
And then, uh, what, what we'll do is we'll put together, Diane and I'll put together, and I have to thank Diane for, uh, doing most of the late work on this, and, uh, like I said way back when, she's gonna, I'm gonna rely on both her and Jane quite a bit, and they do a great job, so we'll get, get back to you on, on that.
Do we still need any?
Still need a motion to approve the.
Approve the budget. So, uh, we got the, uh, script here.
I, I have my new script. You wanna read it? It's, it's only about a page and a half long, it's in bold, it's not my motion.
Boy, I'm old.
I go bigger font.
Capital aggression nowadays.
He's got LASIK coming up Tuesday.
You know, on our, right before you read that, on our, uh.
What was that?
Hold on, Gary's got something.
I have one question, it looks like we've got like two hundred thousand dollars in our, uh, classes and our clubs and everything like that.
Activity funds is what they're called.
Yeah, the activity funds. Do we, uh, I'm looking at a couple, uh, like band is zero, and obviously, that's if they went on a trip, I guess, probably burned most of that, but do, the football team, are they responsible for getting into that money? Can anybody but the football team get that money? Can you redistribute it, is what I'm trying to say, let's say like a, like the, the boys' basketball, uh, can, uh, coaches got some money in there, can someone go in and say, hey, we want some of his money?
Uh, how, how does that work?
It's, it's kind of an internal bank that they have, and Sue Randall handles that, and so they come in and they, uh, request to use the money they have in that.
Okay.
You know, um, you know, if they're, if they're gonna go buy supplies, it doesn't have to be approved for it, but if they're gonna ask for some big item things, uh, they can use those. And, and so when they do fundraising, the fundraising money goes into that account.
And choose from that particular activity or sport?
Correct.
It doesn't get drawn away to somebody else?
Mm-hmm.
So I wanna know. Thank you.
Mr. Crawford? I think I got that reading homepage of Congress, I think we're supposed to read it. Okay. This is the recommended motion. I make a motion, I move that the tentative budget for River Community High School District Seventy-Seven for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand sixteen, and ending July thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, as shown in attachment number CC, be available for public inspection for at least thirty days beginning August eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, in the office of River Community High School, District Seventy-Seven, four oh one South Monroe, Freeburg, Illinois. And further that the administration, administration be authorized to provide the public hearing of said budget at seven P.M. on twenty-second day of September, two thousand sixteen, in the Freeburg High School library at four oh one South Monroe Street, Freeburg, Illinois, six two two four three, as presented in attachment CC.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Crawford, second by Mr. Henning. Let's see, I think we need a roll call.
No questions?
Okay.
Did I hear you say ending two thousand sixteen? That's what you're gonna do?
With June.
Got stolen from me.
It, it, it's the, the viewing of the budget ends it, right, September two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Okay, you got a second, I'm gonna start the roll call with, uh, Mr. Medrell?
Mr. Medrell? Hi.
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 Motion passes. Item C approved, board members delegate to the annual delegate assembly.
Uh, this is, uh, done each year, uh, for those board members that are going up to the Triple I Conference. Uh, unfortunately, Mr. Gough is the only one attending the Triple I Conference with myself, and, uh, so I think by process of elimination, it'd be appropriate to have Mr. Gough either represent or contribute at that conference.
I'll make that motion, you gotta read it. I gotta read it?
We're gonna give this a try.
Oh, okay. I move that the Board of Education appoint Dean Gough to represent Freeburg High School, District Seventy-Seven, as a delegate to the General Assembly at the two sixteen Triple I, Triple One Conference in November.
Got a motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Medrell, those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Uh, board correspondents, I believe none. Addenda items, none. Okay, we need a motion to go in closed session. Got a motion by Mr. Perry, second by Mr. Oz, go in closed session.
Process of discussion, of course.
It's, uh, go in a closed session for topics related to employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees for the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing, testimony on a complaint lodge against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity due to disciplinary causes and litigation. An action against affecting or on behalf of the particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative trust. And when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the budget for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the closed meeting minutes.
Okay, now let's start, uh, who's, who's Mr. Oz, who's aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, we're now in closed session. I'd like to say, I'm gonna say aye.